I call to order the special meeting of the Glendale City Council for August 23rd. Roll call, please, Mr. Sockian.
Madam Mayor, do you wish to take that meeting before the joint city council? Well, I'm sorry, that is the meeting.
The joint meeting will be held tonight at 6:00.
No, no. Yes, thank you, for anyone watching. Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Devine. Here. Next item.
The agenda for the August 23rd, 2016 Special Public Meeting of the City Council was posted on Thursday, August 18th, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
And next?
The only, the first item before you is the approval of minutes for the meetings of August 9th, August 16th, and Special City Council Committee Meeting of August 16, 2016.
Okay, are there any objections?
I'll move the minutes.
You?
Second.
Next item.
Without objections, minutes will be approved as submitted. Item 2, a city attorney regarding discussion of Chapter 1.10 of the Glendale Municipal Code, 1995, titled Local Election Campaign Regulations relating to: 1. Disclosure and Conflict Provisions relate to matters pertaining to the campaign contributions for federal, state, and local elective offices; and 2. The time limitation for a candidate to raise funds to retire a campaign debt. 2A is a motion directing staff, and 2B is a motion to note and file.
Okay, Mr. Ochoa.
I will defer to my learned colleague, Dr. Garcia.
Already? Okay, Mr. Garcia.
J.D.
Mr. Madam Mayor, members of council. The item before you is requested by the council as it relates to two items with respect to our existing campaign finance ordinance, one having to do with the retirement of campaign debt, and the other having to do with participation in voting on matters as it relates to campaign contributors. With respect to the first item, the current ordinance requires that, ceases the election cycle, so to speak, as of November 1st, after the April municipal election, or five months after a special election. And in so doing, also puts that date, that November 1st date, as the date in which all candidates have to cease campaigning, excuse me, cease soliciting funds for the purpose of retiring their campaign debt from the prior election. The purpose of that, from what I recall when it was adopted, was to ensure that at the cessation of the campaign or election cycle, that there's not a constant, ongoing fundraising that occurs after a certain period after the election. Two issues, I think, have come up since the adoption of this rule. One is, I think the legitimate question has been raised whether or not that is indeed sufficient time for candidates to raise money to pay off campaign debt that they may have incurred. And the other issue being, what then would be the penalty, what happens if November 1st comes and goes and the retirement of all campaign debt hasn't occurred, and it places candidates who haven't retired all their campaign debt with the dilemma of either having outstanding campaign debt that they can't retire, or violating the ordinance? So, the question for you, it was raised by one of the council members to take a look at this provision, and the council could do a number of things. It could leave it as is and require some noticing to go out to all candidates. You could eliminate the provision, in essence, keep the election cycle defined as the period between September 1st, prior to the election, and November 1st, after the election, but allow campaign debt to be retired continuously until it's retired. You could require that it be retired prior to the next election cycle. You could require that it be retired prior to any fundraising for a subsequent municipal election. Or you could just, again, leave it as is, but then require some additional notice be sent out to all the candidates. So, that's the first issue that the council requested an update on and to have a discussion on. The second item pertains to council member participation and voting on matters that affect campaign contributors, whether it's an applicant for an entitlement, or contractors, or their subcontractors or subcontractors. As you know, we have very extensive rules as it pertains to both applicants and their contractors, and their contractors and subcontractors, and their presidents and CEOs and whatnot. And so, what the current ordinance does, as you are aware, is it prohibits council members from participating or voting on matters that affect their campaign contributors if they received a contribution within the 12 months preceding the decision that's coming before the council. That rule only applies for contributions made to city elective office. It doesn't apply to any other federal, state, or local office. And council, so the council asked for a discussion on that. In addition, the disclosure requirements, whenever there's a contract or an application for an entitlement that's coming before the council, there's extensive disclosure provisions that apply for all those entities, as well as a requirement that all those entities disclose whether or not they've made contributions to council members for their campaigns. But again, that rule only applies as it pertains to campaigns for city elective office and not for other offices. So, if the council, you know, I guess it's put to the council to have a discussion on that item. I would note, if there is direction that's going to be given to our office to change that rule, either as it pertains to the disclosure requirement or the voting prohibition, the council consider some sort of grandfathering clause for any contributions that were received as of the date, either the date of this report, or the date that we bring back in ordinance. Because, as you know, there are contributions that have been made in two races that affect to the council members on the dais. And I think for everybody involved, both contributors and those council members, the rules at the time allowed for that. And so, you might want to consider that on a going-forward basis. So, with that, that's sort of the summary of the two items that are before you, and we seek direction on how you want us to proceed.
Okay, thank you. So, we have two items. Would anyone like to begin the discussion? Councilmember Sinanian?
Yeah, with respect with the time period within which a candidate is allowed to retire their debt, I think that's a no-brainer. I mean, as long as that debt is accumulated as a result of a campaign, I don't understand the reasoning for the time limitation. It's my understanding that other jurisdictions, including city councils, including the city of Los Angeles, don't have such time limitations, just because it's not easy to retire debt. I mean, it's just hard. And we've had, it's pretty common for a candidate to have debt after their campaign. So, I would recommend that we do away with that time limitation, because to the extent that there's no law being broken, monies are not being somehow collected outside of the rules and regulations that are in place, that debt should be, in fact, people should be encouraged to retire their debt, and should be given the opportunity to do so through fundraising. So, that's my thought. I don't know how my colleagues feel about that. I hope they're supportive of it. In terms of the money that candidates are receiving from an entity, and that's not somehow, it's okay for them to receive the money so long as they're running for, you know, so long as the money's being donated or contributed in a different race, I think that rule is a loophole. It's a short circuit, and it needs to be fixed. So, not sure what the city attorney's office is recommending, what the solution is for that.
Councilmember Sinanian, we don't have necessarily a recommendation. It truly is a policy call. I do recommend, if you are going to change the rule, that you have it on a going-forward basis.
Yeah, not be retroactive, I understand that.
But, again, I think at the time the rule was instituted, it wasn't clear how that was going to apply. Clearly, we couldn't, there's a second part of our ordinance which says, if the council has acted on a particular decision, then council members can't receive contributions to councilmember races for 12 months after that. Now, we couldn't change that rule to say that also, we couldn't change that rule to say you couldn't accept a contribution for any other federal, state, or local office that the council has made a decision, because we can't control, the city doesn't have legislative jurisdiction over other elective offices, but you do have, obviously, jurisdiction over council races.
Oh, Glendale.
But you also have legislative authority over acts taken by the city council, and so that's where your authority is, and it's fully within the discretion of the council to change the rule.
And just let me add, the point, the point is that if action is being taken in the city of Glendale, and you're currently serving in some capacities an elected official in the city of Glendale, just because you're running for a different office, doesn't all of a sudden sort of lift the cloud that would otherwise be there by that entity that is anticipating the action to be taken in the city of Glendale, because they're giving you the money in a different race, not the city council race? I mean, I think it's common sense, and we should close this loophole.
It's kind of the perception.
Well, of course, I mean...
Yeah, just speaking legally, in the area of campaign finance, I mean, the United States Supreme Court continues to whittle down the authority to regular campaign finance, but the one area where they continue to uphold it is, whether, you know, it's perceived as corruption or not, the legislative bodies are authorized to take these actions to minimize what's considered the appearance of quid pro quo corruption.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Garpetian?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While I agree on the time limit that you can retire your debt, because you get elected, you have six months to fund resumes and retire debt.
To my phone?
Yeah. And I'm a soft-spoken person. And when you get elected, you have so many things that you need to learn, you have to find your ways around the city hall, and you don't want to concentrate. I mean, fundraising on the first six months, it takes you away from your own. I think I'm all for eliminating that provision altogether. As far as the campaign contribution for other races, I've never been in that position. I'd like to hear from my colleagues. I have to say, and I agree that contribution is contribution, but I'd like to hear from them as to what they have.
Councilman Najarian?
Well, a little bit of historical context. Glendale had no such regulation until about eight years ago, or maybe nine years ago, where I insisted that we institute these ethics, ethic rules, as well as a campaign contribution limits. We used to have no campaign contribution limits. Someone wanted to give you a $10,000 check, he could do it, and then you could turn around and vote on his project the next day. So, we discussed this as a council, and we, actually, I was looking for a lower contribution limit, but $1,000 is what the council went with. And we really didn't think about the, you know, the concurrent campaigns which may be taking place, running for other offices. Again, I say that it's really the perception that's at stake here. When you're running a campaign and somebody gives you a $1,000 campaign contribution, it's a campaign contribution. It's not a contribution that's going into your pockets. It's not a gift, just permits you to keep running. So, I think that the receipt of campaign contributions is a little bit, you know, overstated in terms of the bias that it can cause an individual. The six-month retirement, or the rule that you close your account within six months, that was somewhat more recently, I think. And the only problem that I have is, as long as there aren't any more expenditures from that campaign, because a skilled candidate could still make expenditures from his campaign account under the guise of propriety, and keep it alive so he's constantly fundraising. So, as long as there's no more spending from that one account, I think that we should extend that time with which to do it. But we can also, I mean, we still have the office holder's account.
Correct.
Issue, and I know that that's not, I don't believe that's mentioned here, but I think that's a $10,000 limit.
$10,000 cap.
Which can be replenished.
Plenished if it's gone down below.
So, I'm not sure how that fits into this, but generally, let me just summarize. In terms of retiring debt, as long as there aren't any more expenditures made from that campaign after the, let's say, from a week after the campaign, because there's always bills that come in that you don't know, maybe even...
A month.
Maybe even a month. I know, I mean, I'm still getting bills from my campaign. We should permit the candidate an opportunity to retire that debt. Otherwise, he's going to take it on himself, and I think things could even get a little uglier at that point, if someone is saddled with a personal debt now. You know, it may lead to some desperate actions, depending how large the debt is. So, I'm okay with that part of it. And in terms of receiving donations and having that be a ground for recusal, I'm okay with that. I guess we have to do it going forward. I mean, we couldn't make it retroactive. So, I'm okay with that also, in terms of...
If I can add something to Councilman Najarian's comments. I think that's a great idea. You sort of don't want to leave it open-ended, so that all of a sudden, a candidate that stopped campaigning six months ago is spending like he's campaigning, or she's campaigning. That doesn't make sense. So, the safe thing would be to set a 30-day, or maybe 45-days, just because these bills sometimes come in later, and we don't want any, you know, candidates to be surprised and get stuck with something that they're not personally responsible for. So, maybe set a 45-day deadline within which they need to report their debt, which will be the closing sort of deadline, after which the debt is the debt, and that's what they can pay off whenever they're paying it off, but not incur any more debts afterwards.
So, it's not a moving target?
It's not a moving target.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yeah, I don't really have much feeling about the date for retiring the debt. I was in favor of the office holder account, because there's things that come up that aren't paid for by the city, and I think it was important. I don't know that, I mean, I've never, I think I have $1,000 or $800 in mind. I've never even thought about filling it up to the $10,000 limit, but I don't know if anybody else has, but I think it's good to be able to raise money just to cover those luncheons and all of the other things that we get invited to. And in terms of the recusal for funds that are raised for other offices, I think that that's a good idea. I think that we should have a recusal requirement, I don't know how many months after the contribution comes in. And of course, I do want to make sure that we get all of the, always get all of the disclosures from your office, from the clerk's office, so that we can run those names and company names. And we'd need both. I just want to make sure no one gets in trouble with the amount of data. If a name comes in for a vendor or contractor, and it's a different name than somebody has a contribution from, I don't think, let me just tell you, you can get so many contributions towards the end of a campaign that having to go and research every officer of every company to run it against it, I don't think is reasonable. But if, you know, as much information as you can provide, I think that we should be able to be reliant on that information when we cross-check against names and companies. But I think it's very important for the public to feel that the process is fair, and that people aren't being influenced wherever their campaign funds are coming from. So, fine with that. It shouldn't be retroactive, that wouldn't be possible, but if we set it from, you know, next week or whatever, I think I'm the only one here that's in that position, and I'm happy to start running those names against...
To that point...
And by the way, I've been trying to do that anyway, because I feel like there is a perception issue, but I'll definitely make it more systematic and make sure that we use if that comes up.
And to that point, Councilmember Friedman, and then the council, there already is a provision in the code which says that the names of the contributors, the names of the related entities, whether it's an applicant or contractor, have to be provided to the council members, and if it's not, through error of the applicant or error of the staff, then it doesn't become a violation of the council member, for that very reason. We had that discussion a couple of years ago when we did this the first time, and it was for that precise reason, because at the end of the day, you can't be responsible for all the information that you're not aware of. So, that's already embedded into the ordinance.
Right.
If I can just make a short comment. I think the time period should reflect, should mirror whatever the time period is, you know, the recusal period.
12 months.
It should be 12-month period.
12 months after the contribution.
That is just fair, because we're saying the money's money, contribution's contribution, that, you know, then the time period's a time period, so 12 months is fair.
Yeah, in essence, we'd be redefining what a campaign contribution is for this provision to include not only city elective offices, but the other offices, and so that'll be easier to implement.
Mr. Garpetian, did you want to...
Yes, I just want to add something to the limit of the contribution, which is $1,000 right now. I don't have any issue with that, but I follow everything. And this was, I think, eight years ago, nine years ago that was changed, if I'm not mistaken. And, you know, some of the, and the rationale behind it was, we wanted to be fair to the incumbent, I mean, the challengers, and it's incumbents raise more money, the easier for incumbents to raise money. And so, for the sake of the challengers, they dropped the limit to $1,000. I got to tell you, sometimes when you run, it's your first time or second time running, your family members are the first ones who come to your aid, and they can write you a check for $3,000, but they can't now, because, and it hurts the challengers. I think this, and at that time, the council raised as much as, there was no limit, and raised tons of money, and then they changed the rules right on the spot and said, it's not fair to the challengers. I think, I don't know, I had an issue with that. I don't think the limit has anything to do with the amount of money you can raise. I think it makes it much tougher on the challengers instead of... I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, but I'll support the idea of discussing that, because I agree, first of all, $1,000 eight years ago is not $1,000 today. It's a very different amount, very different value, I should say. As a challenger, I raised more money than, you know, the other 11 candidates, so as a challenger, I didn't have trouble raising money. So, I don't think really this somehow hurts or helps the, either the incumbent or the challenger. But I think, just realistically speaking, the amounts that were set almost a decade ago are not truly reflective of the needs that campaigns have today. But that's not on the agenda today, but I'm happy to, you know, support you to bring it back.
When we bring back the ordinance, we'll have that as a discussion point in the staff report, so you guys, the council can provide us direction if you'd like.
All right, thank you. Thank you all. Well, I see a trend here, and I agree with everything that's been said. I also want to make sure that the disclosure provisions are provided also in the proposals that are brought before us, so that we have that information in reference to recusing. So, I think we're ready for a, we're, a motion with the 45-day deadline.
Right.
Okay, and also to change it to the city, state, federal, for what, no matter what office you're running, campaigning.
And on the retirement of the campaign debt, is that period open-ended, or do you want it to end at the end of, prior to the next municipal election period, which is, so for those that ran in '17, or '15, you'd have till the beginning of '18 to do it, or just want to have it open-ended? That's what I heard.
I think we can leave it open-ended, because I don't think anyone wants to have debt sitting around. I think everyone has the natural impulse to pay off debt as soon as possible. So, having it four years from date of election, or open-ended, really practically doesn't make a difference. The point is to not jam up the candidates, and thereby, you know, you're really, you're taken away from the democratic process. I mean, you're discouraging people from running for office, because then they're worried about, well, what happens if I'm stuck with huge debt?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Second.
So, the motion is to amend the ordinance as it relates to campaign, retirement of campaign debt, to eliminate that November 1 or five-month deadline. We will keep the election cycle the same, but it'll exclude, except for purposes of raising funds to pay off campaign debt. And then we'll revise the definition of campaign contribution to include contributions to any federal, state, or local office, so that'll include, so that'll bring within its regulation, the regulation on participation in voting on matters pertaining to campaign contributors. Those are the two items we'll bring back. And then, as far as the ordinance, the ordinance will include those changes, and then we'll also bring back the motion, we'll bring back the information on the campaign contribution limits. So, that's the motion as a...
And the disclosure provision is in there?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the campaign, when are you going to bring back the campaign limits?
We'll bring it back at the same...
You say you're bringing it back along with this, or it'll be a separate discussion?
Yes. It'll be, no, I'll bring it back together, quickly, because it's just, with the ordinance, I'll bring, what I'll do is I'll bring back the ordinance with the changes that you are directing me to bring, but the staff report will include a discussion of whether or not you should also change the $1,000...
I'd like that to be in a separate, a separate vote than the other.
Yeah, it will, because I won't put it in, I won't be able to put it in the ordinance. I need the council to direct us first.
Got it.
Right, thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes, thank you. Next item.
Three is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Electric Services Contract, and amended and restated implementation agreement for the Holder Canyon Power Project, Hoover Power Plant. Three is a motion authorizing city manager and is designated to execute an electrical services contract, and amended and restated implementation agreement with the United States Department of Energy, Western Area Power Administration, and the United States Bureau of Reclamation, along with ancillary documents for the purchase of power and capacity from the Hoover Power Plant for a term of 50 years, with service to commence on October 1st, 2017.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, ma'am. This is an item that would otherwise be really on your consent agenda, except by the very lengthy term, a 50-year agreement with the Bureau of Land Management as it pertains to our interests in Hoover Dam. We've been involved in Hoover Dam since the 1930s, initial 50-year term, an extension of 30 years, and now at this point, as it's set to expire in 2017, we're looking for your permission to enter into that next 50-year agreement. This is a relatively small part of our portfolio, but arguably the cheapest part of our portfolio in terms of the amount of energy that we get and the cost, relative cost of it. So, we would ask for your approval of this 50-year agreement. Mr. Zern, Mr. Abay can answer any specific questions that you have, but again, this is something that we would hope and expect to continue.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sinanian?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, what does this obligate us to do? What are our obligations under this contract?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sinanian, this is 72 megawatts over a one-year period. That's a relatively small about, about 6 megawatts a month. We work that into our overall daily load calculations. It really kind of helps us smooth things, more than anything. It's a very easy contract to manage. We've been in for 100 years, it's little or no problem. There is some transmission associated.
Sure.
Not necessarily in this agreement, but we can't have access to that transmission unless we are in this agreement. So, it's not huge either, and as Mr. Ochoa said, this is the cheapest we have in our portfolio. I do want to make one comment. There's a correction in the report. We projected our capacity and our entitlement is kilowatt-hours, it should be megawatt-hours.
Yes.
But maybe explain the difference between the capacity and the power, because one went up slightly and one went...
Right, there's a total capacity in the plant that you have access to over a one-year period, that's 20 megawatts, more or less, for us. But it really boils down to the 6 megawatts we get on a monthly basis, and the 72 megawatt hours that we are able to generate on an annual basis. So, it's, it just happens to be, they put a little bit of a limitation so that you can't go deeper into the plant, this is what you have, if you, you cannot exceed that. But usually, for us, it never has an issue in us getting the number of megawatts that we project every month at 6. There is sometimes, lately, probably more than ever, there is issues with water levels in Lake Mead, but generally, that doesn't have a real big impact. And as Mr. Ochoa said, this is a relatively small part, very small part of our overall portfolio.
Now, the price per megawatt, or however it is calculated, is, are we tied down, are we, is that determined in the contract now, or is there a methodology that's set out in the contract? What is it?
It's pretty much tied down now.
So, today, we know what we'll be paying 50 years from now?
Right.
Is that, so that's what worries me? Is that a good idea, you know, considering modern technologies, and, I don't know, the repowering of the Grayson, and so on and so forth? Is this, do we want to tie ourselves down to what, you know, hydro power for the next 50 years?
Mr. Sinanian, in most cases, I would tell you no, if it was a different type of agreement, but because it's such a low amount, and the price is so low...
Or cheapest power.
This price in 100 years has not gone down.
Cheapest power now, I'm worried whether it's going to be cheapest power in 50 years.
Oh, it continually is cheap, and it is such a little amount. The total amount you're looking at for us over a year period is about $1.5 million. That's really nothing. It is, although not in, we're not able to count it in our RPS, it is clean, green generation. There's no fuel, there's no emissions. So, you make, it's a really good question, because I would never tie us down to something like, you know, solar or wind even, at today's prices, for a term of 50 years, but it's such a small amount, and it is good green power, even though we can't claim it. But I, it just, I don't see it costing us any, a lot more than where we are right now. It's gone up, I think, $2 in the last 20 years.
$2 per what?
Yeah, per megawatt. So, it's less than $30 a megawatt. And for instance, we don't have anything that's, the closest to that is nuclear power, at a little under 50, and then you got coal at about 50, 50... at a little under 50, and then you got coal at about 50, 55. And those are going by the, you know, those are going to be gone very, very soon. So, this is still a good deal and it's such a small amount.
And this amount is guaranteed?
Yes.
So, it won't go up or-
Well, it's guaranteed to the extent that there is availability. So, as I said, if, if for any reason the water level was to drop in Lake Mead and they couldn't push water through the dam, then, then the, all of the agencies that are involved, their, their allocation will be reduced. That's one of the things that we live with there. Has never really been a problem until recently, as you can imagine with the drought. So, although projections for Lake Mead look good for the next 12 months and conservation efforts are in place to maintain that level, they don't want to shut the dam down.
Okay, question. So, it's six megawatt a month?
Six megawatts a month, yes.
And what is our, our total usage? Is 330?
Three, no, Mr. Garpetyan, our, on average, we use somewhere in the neighborhood of about 150 to 170 megawatts. That's on a 12-month basis. When it gets really warm, you'll see that go up. Our all-time record is 343. We've hit 300 only a couple times, even this summer. So, our usage is, is well under 200 on a, on a day-to-day average.
Or like 5% or 3% of our-
Exactly. We use it in, as I said, in a factoring point for balancing purposes. This is not, certainly not something that we count on keeping the lights on in 110-degree heat, but it is nice to have in the portfolio. And as I said, it's been an easy contract to manage and it's been very, very economical.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian? Yes.
And next?
Four is Director of Public Works Regarding Upgrade of the Existing T2 Systems Digital Multispace Parking Meters on Brand Boulevard. For one is a motion authorizing an amendment to increase the contract amount with T2 Systems Canada, Inc. by $340,000 for a replacement of the existing digital multispace meters on Brand Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, ma'am. So, we have today the Luke 1 meters, the multi-car meters that are there on Brand. We have the Luke radius meters that are there in the parking lots, the automated ones that are in our parking lots. And of course, we have the old coin-operated ones. So, this doesn't deal with those ones that take the quarters only, but rather the ones in the parking lots, or I'm sorry, the ones on Brand Boulevard, and not to be confused with the ones in the parking lots. So, what we are asking to do is replace the 34 meters that are there on the street to the amount that was listed by the city clerk. We are trying to align to a 2020 opportunity, a 2020 window, when we would go out to bid again on all of these items. And so, by then, the radius meters will be at the end of their life. Our agreement for the maintenance of the, with T2, for the, what'll be now the Luke 2 meters that are on Brand Boulevard will all come to a head. We would likely do an RFP as we did back in 2008 and then take one larger, kind of comprehensive look at everything in the, in the downtown in particular. So, if you have specific questions, Mr. Dombrowski, our parking administrators here, as well as Mr. Golanyan, but this basically is an extension of that contract with T2.
Okay, questions?
I have a question.
Councilmember Friedman?
So, it sounds like you're not replace, you're only replacing a small number of the meters. You're not replacing all, and you're replacing them with like meters?
Yes, these are the Luke 2s to replace the Luke 1s on Brand Boulevard.
Okay, so a few things. New parking technology is to allow people to use smartphones to pay for parking, that kind of thing, and to find parking with smartphones. I'm assuming that these meters don't have that capacity?
These ones, the Luke 2s will have the software upgrades. Right now, we, you can pay with your smartphone or to extend your time after you first log in and take up a space. In terms of finding it, I would have to defer to Mr. Dombrowski.
So, these ones, you will or you won't be able to do that?
You'll be able to continue doing it, as you can now.
You can pay with your smartphone now?
When you, when you, after you take up a space, you can put in your number and the, the meter will call you and let you know that you're running out of-
Our meters do that now?
They do for me.
I didn't know that. The other thing is that a lot of people complain, and I've had the same experience, that it's really hard to read the meters in the sun with the glare. So, do the new meters solve that problem?
Good afternoon, councilmembers, and Councilmember Devine.
Explain that you, so you can pay with your phone? You don't need to put your credit card in anymore?
When you pay with a credit card the initial time, you can enter your phone number after the transaction and it will text you a reminder that says your parking is about to expire.
But you can't pay with your phone?
But you can initially pay with your phone. Pasadena, I believe, is releasing an RFP in the next week or two for mobile payments and they are definitely going to be working with us, whatever implant-
So, why aren't we just moving up to the latest technology and allow people to pay with their phones and do all the things that other cities are, are moving towards? Why have this interim step where we're putting in what are, sound like they're already somewhat obsolete technologies?
Because your maintenance contract for the technology that you has, is not expired and won't be expired for a period of time still.
But we're spending $340,000 on-
To upgrade the meters themselves.
Couple of meters, right, but again-
34 meters on the, on the Boulevard.
So, we're spending, we're spending quite a lot of money on each meter. So, so again, why not then just go and put in the meters that you can pay for with your-
Well, because your, the meters that you have in the parking lots aren't ready to be replaced, so you would basically be eating that sunk cost. You would be on the hook for the termination of the existing maintenance agreement that you have that would, that goes through 2020. And then you would have presumably the benefit of whatever you would get by way of these 34 meters on Brand Boulevard. So, again, our idea is to get us into alignment on the parking lots, the Boulevard, and the maintenance contract. That would be 2020.
So, have we talked to our, the company to which we have our maintenance contract about upgrading the meters instead of replace, with, with the latest technology, instead of this interim technology?
I would submit to you, it's not as easy as just pulling out the guts and saying, oh, it's a new board that you put in. There is a new meter that will give us some, some latitude for new technology. And whether or not that would do, the opportunity to go find, using GPS or something else, find a vacant parking spot, I don't know that. Tad can answer whether or not that's the case.
Well, but, but we're already taking them out to replace them.
You're replacing the 34 meters right here.
So, why not replace the 34 meters with ones where you can pay with your, your phone?
Because you're going, because you're going to, you have an agreement with T2, you need to go with something that T2 will provide.
They won't provide those?
The, this is the Luke 2 and the Luke 1 is what they provide. So, until that contract expires, unless we're going to break that contract, you're fairly well locked in to the service provider that you have. If you want us to go look at breaking the contract, certainly we can go look at that. But at this point, what they provided, what through a competitive process in '08 was the Luke 1, this is the new generation of those that'll have some new bells and whistles. I don't know if those bells and whistles do exactly what you're asking.
They're here, right? Why don't we ask them? They're here?
T2 is not actually here. I do want to separate the two, though, because the, the maintenance and operation piece that Mr. Ochoa was talking about is the hard structure. This is their newest product. This is what they offer. The mobile payments are generally third-party companies that put a sticker on the meter and so it goes on our existing infrastructure. It can be layered. T2 actually works with several of the companies that do mobile payments, so any of those can be added, any of those can be added on when we're ready. The first step was to replace the actual infrastructure and, with the newer meters, so that we didn't have to go out and peel off all the stickers off the old machines once these meters went end of life, so.
That's a slightly different answer than Mr. Ochoa just gave, which is fine.
I apologize for being unclear.
I don't expect him to be in, you know, to be an expert in, I always think he's an expert in absolutely everything and I feel relieved to know that he's not always. So, it sounds like the technology is fairly recent technology and that we can upgrade it if we want to with other, other bells and whistles, like mobile payment, like maybe having some kind of demand pricing at some point in the future, other things like that.
Correct. All of those policy pieces will be available with the new meters that are being installed. In addition, they also have improvements for the glare. They have what's called a coin escrow. Currently, we do get some complaints from customers when they put in coins and they, then they cancel the transaction. The coins are already in the box. There's nothing we can do to refund that money. So, now there will be a coin escrow where it goes into a chute ahead of time and when the transaction's canceled, that money's returned to the customer.
And the glare will be better, though, because it really is pretty bad.
The displays, the displays, a few years ago, we actually switched the displays from their standard. It used to be a white background with blue writing and it was harder to see. Flipping that and reversing it where it's a blue background now with white writing did help some, but the displays themselves are about eight years old, so obviously just the LCD over time has, has gotten worse. And then the new model that would be installed is actually a better display than the one that was eight years ago. So, the technology has improved and these new meters would have improvements in the, in the infrastructure piece. The mobile payment piece is something that's completely separate and could be looked at independently, which is why we were looking at Pasadena and saying, whatever company goes into Pasadena, a lot of people will be creating accounts with that company and some of their customer bases, ours as well. It may be easier to go with the same company that winds up being over there. There may be things that are coming down the pike now that would help with those decisions in the future.
All right. Councilmember Garpetyan?
How many, how many meters do we have on Brand Boulevard altogether?
34.
Only 34?
Because they're multispace.
Yeah. Which covers a little over 200 spaces.
Yeah. So, we're replacing the Boulevard, not touching, yeah.
So, our contract is, ends on, in 2020, right?
Yes.
Service contract? So, what if you don't replace this, this meters? What happens until 2020? It's four years away, three and a half years away. What happens if you don't even replace them?
You would, yeah, you would probably run these to, to failure in some cases, but the good news is that the ones in the lots would be at the, the end of their life. So, the idea that I think is that we would be in a situation on, on Brand Boulevard where they're probably halfway through or getting close to halfway through their life. If we were going to do the RFP and replace the meters that we have everywhere, we probably would do it in phases. And at that case, we would flip-flop this a little bit, do the parking lots that are at the end, and then over the next year or so, as, as the meters themselves on Brand Boulevard are starting to wear out and it would be time for another kind of upgrade, replace those with whoever we would select. Or if you were that happy, you would find a way to re-up one master contract with, with the provider. So, at least there you have some flexibility.
Because I, I'm, I'm looking at this thing, it's $340,000, it's $10,000 a unit. And for four years, it's, it's $60,000 a year. Do we generate $60,000 a year from these 200 spots?
The fiscal year revenue last year was $780,000 for Brand Boulevard.
From, from Brand Boulevard?
For the, just Brand Boulevard.
And would this, this is just make it, will make it more efficient? It's not necessarily-
It's the new platform for the bells and whistles that Councilmember Devine, or Councilmember Friedman was asking about.
And what's the life expectancy of these units? We install it tomorrow, how long will it work?
Be another 10 to 12 years, but to the extent that these are getting more and more high-tech, I think the idea would be each generation is no longer a 10-year lifespan. Generally speaking, each, every five years, every four years, heck, maybe even every three years, depending on, on what's happening in the market, could be an opportunity to upgrade. So, I think if, if we were going to replace these items or these 34 meters with brand-new, state-of-the-art, whatever it may be, in 2021, for example, 2022, you're already into year six, maybe even year seven of their lifespan, so it's less of a lost cost for us. And by then, as I say, the, the radius meters and the lots are at that point at or a little beyond their useful life. And you, again, the idea is to align your, your contract with your hard cost, your-
That's where I was going to go. This last question is, if this equipment is going to work another six or seven years and our contract ends in four years, then can we go like on a year-to-year basis or we have to renew or extend our contract or write a new contract at 2020 for another 10 years and we're stuck with this? Is this, is this, is this going to obligate us to write another contract before the, the end of life of this?
Yeah, that's a great question, because you'll have the opportunity really to set your own terms. If you said now, you know, the, let's say the radius meters in the lots are working just fine, there are no issues, and we want to just let those run to fail, and you want to burn off the full, the full cost or the full life of the 34 Luke 2s on the street, maybe you go year-to-year. That's, but you have the ability to set those terms. Maybe the, the folks at T2 come in and say, I'll make you an amazing deal, and, and they put forth those terms. You know, maybe it's worth it, there's enough whiz-bang stuff out there that you're willing to, to eat the last three years of the Luke 2s, because maybe those other meters in, in the lots are, are starting to fail, that we're just going to move forward with the total procurement. The point being that come 2019, really, heading into 2020, you have the opportunity to set those terms. Our goal is to get everything as much into alignment as we can.
But if, if we don't replace those and leave it, just leave it the way it is until 2020, how, what are we going to lose?
On the, on these 34?
Yeah.
You possibly get to a point where you're running to failure. I mean, to the extent that, that, you know, you don't get any of the, the neat stuff that would come along, maybe what you have right now is fine and you're okay with it. Then you're just waiting and the maintenance cost gets a little bit more, but you have a contract for that and you're just letting this thing play itself out over years. But these being a little bit more technologically advanced, when you have that problem and they're multi, they're multi-car meters, you know, the, the problem gets magnified. If you have a problem at a meter, you're potentially losing revenue from more than just one space. So, to the extent that I think we have the ability at this point to, to really key on 2020, we know that the, the parking lots will be ready at that point and we will be in a good position for a new generation, even on the Boulevard. We, we're recommending this because we think it's, it's the right time to do it.
And how old are these machines, the ones that we have?
These ones that we have were from an '08 procurement, so '08, '09.
All right.
Okay. All right. I also had, you know, concerns about $10,000 per parking meter and, but, and I also wanted to know, the payback time is, you said we make $700,000 a year?
$780,000 last year.
On 34?
On 34 meters.
So, that, that more or less pays for, plus, doesn't it?
34 multispace meters.
Yes, okay, sure. All right, thank you very much. Do any other questions, discussion? Okay, do I have a motion for the item?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes, next item?
Five is Director of Finance Regarding Internal Audit Annual Work Plan. Five one is a note and file, the Internal Audit Annual Work Plan for the 2016, '17 fiscal year.
Mr. Ochoa?
It's, it's kind of a silver lining, I suppose, for the internal audit folks, that it took a series of very unfortunate, high-profile scandals, for lack of a better term, in a number of cities, both prone to these problems and not prone to these problems, these types number of cities, both prone to these problems and not prone to these problems, these types of problems, to make the internal audit units of various municipalities the rock stars of public administration. And to that end, I think you'll be happy to know, later on tonight, you have, as you've seen in your packet, I'm sure you've perused the annual report for the previous year that, that went to the Audit Committee, and I, our internal auditor, Eileen Donoghue, is going to talk to you about what we're going to audit in the coming year, and also the manner in which we select those items to audit in the coming year, and hopefully give you and the community a strong sense of confidence that what Glendale has focused on is really where our eyes should be in those weak spots. So, with that, Eileen?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council members. My name is Eileen Donoghue, and I work as the Internal Audit Manager for the city. Internal audit provides a valuable function for the city. We serve the city by providing services that are aimed at minimizing risk, improving internal controls, strengthening accountability, maximizing efficiency and effectiveness, and also reducing costs. Every year, we have to go out and identify which projects we're going to work on. And in doing this, we work with all the departments. We hold communications with all the departments where we ask open-ended questions about what is going on in their environment, what have been changes, what are expected changes, what are new technologies, where are their concerns in their departments. We take these communications with the departments, and we talk about potential audit subjects. In doing so, we solidify what our audit universe will be for these departments. The next step in our audit work plan process is we take these particular audit subjects and we score them, because that way we can have a value that we can go across all departments and able to make our selection. We score it for risk in financial, compliance, operational, and reputation. And when we do that, then we combine all our results, and this year, on our audit universe, we had 129 potential audit subject areas, and there's only four internal auditors. So, we had to then decide how to best use our resources and effectively for the city. We looked at any of the potential audit areas that were higher risk. We also, in our discussions, asked all the department directors where they wanted us to spend our resources, because it's really important that we're auditing an area in their department that they feel is important to us. And we get a lot of feedback from the directors. It's amazing they want us in there doing audits, because they want their operations to be more effective. They want to use their resources to the best of their abilities. This year, our audit work plan for fiscal year 17 has 19 projects on it. So, we went from the 129, and then there was a couple extra, down to 19. Through the process, we selected nine, which are listed here on this. These are our planned audit projects. As well, going into the 19, we had five carryover projects from the prior year. That is where we had already started, probably in June, we had started doing planning work on these audits. So, these carried over. So, that was nine plus five. And then we have an additional five projects that we consider as our regular internal projects. Auditors like to be accountable, and always, we document every day what we work on. And so, we have other activities that we perform during the day that we need to identify what we're working on, and these are our regular internal projects.
Go back to that nine, uh...
Yes.
...place back, please.
Yes. And what we try to do is we try to get coverage over multiple departments, because we could just go and work on one department, but we really try to make sure that our coverage is over multiple departments. And you'll see in what I reported to you also gives the horizon for fiscal year 18, because you might not see a particular department up there for 17, but when you look out over 18, you'll see that we've tried to bring in the other departments that aren't covered.
So, a quick question. Let's say, number one, development impact fee audit. What do you do when you audit them? What, what happens at that time?
Then we go in and we have an entrance conference with the department, and we have, their objective of what they, why they wanted this on our audit work plan is because there is a development impact fee that's being collected, and they want to make sure that we go back and we look to make sure that the collections have occurred where they should have occurred, and that the proper revenues have been collected. We have, our audit process also includes, in each individual audit, a, a risk assessment as well, as when we're doing the audit, where we go in and we do a workflow and what is going on in that particular operation, and we evaluate it for risk, and we, when we do our particular audits, we focus on those things in that audit that's higher risk, because there might be a lot of controls over a certain aspect of an operation that, then we don't want to put our resources in that particular area, because there are already high controls. We evaluate where the lower, lower controls, or there's risk of no controls, and so then we do additional field work in those areas.
So, let's go to the last on item nine.
Okay.
Permit refunds audit.
Mm-hmm.
Just auditing to make sure that the refunds were given, are the correct ones, or...
That was actually identified because there was a recent fraud associated with permit refunds, where a city employee, not at our city, a city employee had found a loophole in their particular city where they were able to go in and get those refunds and get them submitted to themselves, and get the money back themselves. So, we would go in and we'd see what's the workflow process for, for permit refunds, what are the controls over issuing those refunds out to the person that paid them to make sure that it goes to the proper person.
So, we're, we're not just looking at, at making sure all the dollars and cents line up. The auditors will go and say, you know, walk me through this process. You get up, you walk over, you open a drawer, you take out a form, you talk about, these are the, the items, the questions that you ask. Who checks that? You know, who has control? Who touches the paper? So that there is a very clear, granular understanding of how a process and system works. It's, it's, it, it takes a, a certain degree of discipline to be that type of auditor, but we are very good for it. And, and as was mentioned, the departments actually request and are not shying away from having internal audit go through their operations.
Do they make recommendations at the end on how to, you know, better the process?
And management has the opportunity to agree or disagree.
And that's part of our regular process, too. We, we follow up if those observations have been implemented or they're not, or what's the status, and we followed along until it's been corrected.
Great. Okay.
There's a difference between auditing a process and auditing the actual program. So, when do you just audit the process to make sure that the process is correct? And when do you go further and actually make sure that there's nothing fraudulent happening, even though a process is in effect?
Auditors always are looking, considering fraud in their, when we're doing our audits. When we're doing our walkthroughs, we're identifying where there's potential risk. So, we are always looking at that. Our audits that we are doing are performance audits.
Let me be a little bit clearer then. So, in, in the city you mentioned, the close-by city that had that large fraud, they also had audits, and they had audit of that, audits of that department. So, they looked at their process, and their auditor said, there's a process in place, and the process seems fine. Problem was, somebody was circumventing the process, but their audit didn't go beyond and actually start to look at bank accounts and withdrawals and all of that, because, of course, you, you don't have the manpower to do that with every audit you do, and you shouldn't be expected. But are there times when you actually go a little bit beyond and do spot-check receipts, accounts, inventories, or are you only looking at those processes?
No, of course, we, that's part of our field work. We go more into it, especially if we've identified that the controls aren't really functioning as they should be, because that ends up making it be a risk. And so, we do additional detailed test work, where then we would go in and look at those invoices and look at the detailed transactions.
Even when the process, even when the processes seem strong. We, we also, in the city of Glendale, had fraud. We had fraud with one of our affordable housing developers, and there were processes in place to make sure that didn't happen, but we still didn't catch the fraud.
Right.
So, because we were not looking, we were, I, it's my understanding, we were trusting an outside third-party overseer, and we were not double-checking and going back and doing the kind of controls.
I think, yeah. Not to interrupt, but I would just, the, that, that particular instance, and even just for clarification, don't presume, please, that, that every city, even cities that are near our size, who we would otherwise see as comparable, have a very robust internal audit program. That city that, that we were talking about at the beginning did not have an internal audit program. Now they do, and it's really modeled in a lot of ways after what Glendale does. What you see is, in, I think speaks to your second example, in terms of, these are the items that we're going and looking for and looking through, and everybody has an op, everybody, meaning the departments, and then the Audit Committee, has an opportunity to add things onto that list. There are some limited opportunities for the, the internal auditors to go and decide they want to go spot-check some other element of, of the business, but generally speaking, they, they stick to the work plan. And so, in terms of a, a fraudulent third party that is not necessarily part of the city's process, but doing something on their own, that wouldn't necessarily be something that the Audit Committee would be, or that the auditors would catch, unless, in fact, the way that we draw down or allow draw, allow draws to take place is one of those items on the work plan.
But it does sound like there are times when you feel that the risk is so extreme, or that you feel like there have been some weak controls, where you do go beyond just looking at the controls, and you will go and investigate further. So, I'm glad to hear that there are times when our internal auditors will go and take that kind of closer look.
Right. And that also addresses observations that we have, because we identify where mitigating controls should be put in place, because we are seeing that across the board, where with reduction in staff, where there used to be segregation of duties. Now, instead of doing the same thing as we did last year, where there were segregation of duties, now we have to come back and say, okay, you need to implement mitigating controls, like follow-up monitoring, what, that wasn't there in the past, because the segregation of duties are no longer there. And you'll see that in our observations. Continuing on, going through the projects, as well, we shared the draft audit work plan with upper management and asked for any feedback and tweaks to, to get it finalized. And then we submitted to the Audit Committee in July and got, gained acceptance on the work plan. As mentioned, the work plan is a flexible document, and it changes throughout the year based on changes in the organization. That concludes my presentation on the report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do you have any questions, comments from the council? Okay.
Just a comment that I think it's great that the city of Glendale has an internal[1732.64]